All right, we're recording.
As Chair of the Southampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Southampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: (646) 876-9923 and Web ID (922) 36714657, or by clicking the website which is listed on the agenda. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 Office at www.sau21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call (603) 926-8992, extension 103, or email at REVANS@SAU21.org. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting shall be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Rhonda, I think you're muted.
And Rhonda, Matt's waiting to come in.
I thought Matt was in. Okay, Sharon Gordon?
Here and I'm alone.
Rebecca Burdick? Becky Burdick, do you hear us?
Here alone.
Jim Kine?
I'm here and alone as well.
I have the roll call taken.
Great. All right, next on the agenda is consideration of the minutes for the June 4, 2020 regular meeting. Does anybody have any comments that they want to have before accepting? I'll take silence as a golden. Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes for June 4, 2020?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for June 4, 2020 as written.
Can I get a second? Thank you.
Becky, do you hear us?
Yeah, yes, I can hear you guys.
Do you want a second for minutes?
I second that.
Great, thank you. Rhonda, you want to give a vote?
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Burdick?
Yeah.
And Jim Kine?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Great. Next on the agenda is under the reports section, it's the finance report. Matt, do you want to run through this?
Yes. Sorry about that. I didn't realize that was on the video. So, we have attached the year-to-date expenditure report. As we're only a month into the fiscal year, there's little to report. However, I do want to note that you'll see salaries have not been appropriated. That's because the bulk of our salaries, our payroll has not started yet until school starts. So that includes all our teachers, specialists, et cetera. Also, on page five, you'll see there's a consultants line item under buildings, and that item is for the roof consultants that will be, that is assessing the gym roof, will be developing the specifications, and will project or manage the construction process. That will be taken out of the expendable trust. However, it's, the initial expenditure comes out of the operating budget and then will be credited once we make that withdrawal at that point. So that will zero out at a later date. Be happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Yeah, Matt, what's the timeframe on the roof consultant? I'm getting a report.
Yeah, so that's in process now, and at which point, once he finishes his analysis, he'll put together the RFP, we'll go out to bid and get a real number for us to consider when we go through the budget process as to whether we want to put it on a warrant article for the community this year.
Okay, great.
And Matt, we, with the snow coming in the winter, we know how we're going to safely clear the roof off without damaging it further. Is there like a plan in place for that?
Yeah, so we, I mean, best practice is to try to stay off that roof as much as possible. Oftentimes, if we try to clear it, that, or I think in the past, that's created more problems. However, we do have a protocol in place that if we, we do have a calculation. So if we get a certain amount of snow with a water content that's high enough, then we would look at potentially clearing the roof. But that's very unlikely. So I hope to not have to clear it.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any other questions regarding the finance report? All right, I'll take that as we can move on to the next one, which is obviously, actually, next is questions and comments from those in attendance. Public comment. Rhonda, how do you want to handle this? Do we want to have them write in the, do you have the capability to ask questions in chat, or?
I think if they want to raise their hand, then we can see that, and you can call on them one by one, Jim, and we can allow them to speak.
That works. So if anybody, there is a good amount of people in attendance. So if anybody has, would like to speak or make a public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom, and Rhonda will allow that to occur.
Caroline, you want to remind them how to raise their hand? I forget, because I don't see it from their side.
Sure, you need to make sure first that you have the Zoom window completely open, not partially, and then you open the panelists or the participants' window. And at the bottom of that window, if that's still the case, I believe there's a tab where you, yeah, so at the bottom, it says raise hand.
And I'm not currently seeing anybody raise their hand, Jim, not at the moment. If I see any, I will let you know.
Great. Maybe we'll get some after. All right, well, we'll move on to really, I think, the heart of this meeting and probably the most important topic, which is 5A, which is the plan for the return to school. And I just want to kind of, for anybody who didn't dial into the joint board meeting last night, the joint board made the decision to, well, the administration and Dr. Lupini specifically gave a recommendation for each school. The joint board had a vote where we approved a remote learning academy, and then also would individually vote on the plan at the various school districts. So that is the intent tonight, and I think the, or today. And I think it'd be helpful just to kind of run through our plan and give an update on what we see in the building and kind of go from there. So, I don't know, Bill, I don't know if you want to start, or Michelle, or kind of?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make, I'll make two, probably two comments. And I believe, I believe the plan is now up on our website, Rhonda, is that correct? Yeah, the plan is now up on our website. So I'm going to spare you 75 slides tonight. So I'll just say two things. First, that the joint board has approved a calendar that has our teachers starting prior to Labor Day. I believe we've scheduled seven days with them. We're still figuring out specifically the schedule for our EAs, but they will also have some days prior to then. And then students will start, and I know kindergarten may be different, and the high school level juniors or seniors versus ninth graders may be different, will start after Labor Day on the, on the 8. So that's been approved, and we will be working as quickly as we can over the next couple of days to make sure that that calendar gets out to all parents. Second of all, with respect to Southampton, our recommendation at this point was for a return to in-person instruction for students K through 8. And I want to be really careful here, because I don't want there to be any misinterpretation should circumstances change down the line. That recommendation in this particular school is largely based on the response we got to the parent survey. So that recommendation is possible because of the, I think it was 64 or so parents who responded on behalf of their children, 50% of them indicated that students would be returning to in-person instruction. That's what allows us to put this model in place. Now, there is some number above that 50% when we go out and really look for firm commitments, which is one of the things that your principal will be doing very, very soon. There is some number above that that would obviously change that recommendation. There may be some numbers within particular classrooms or grade levels that might change that recommendation in order to maintain six-foot social distancing and all of the other safety precautions that we are putting in place. But, and you're right, Mr. Kine, every building's a little different in the reasoning, right? For this building, I just want to be clear on that reasoning that allows this to happen. And should those numbers shift, or should we see differences as we truly start to see students register and families make a commitment, then we might have to come back to this board to modify that plan. But that's the plan we're recommending today. And I know your principals started to do some great work with what that actually looks like in place. And so I'll be quiet and let Michelle talk about some of those factors.
Sure. I think you want me to talk about what the things we have for safety precautions?
And again, I know, I know you've just started. We only went to the joint board last night, but I feel like a chance to lay some of those elements out.
Sure.
And Michelle, before you start, I think, yeah, the way I would think about it is, you know, what is the remote learning academy look like just for people that are dialing in? And then all, but also for children who, or parents who select to send their children into the building, how do they do that in a safe manner? And what precautions have we made in order to minimize the risk for the student body and the staff?
Do you want me to try the remote learning piece?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so one thing we were, we were also clear about last night in the presentation is that the remote learning academy for students from any of our particular schools does not necessarily mean your teachers, because your teachers, in the case of your building, are doing face-to-face instruction, in-person instruction. So it will mean teachers from across our SAU, yet to be determined exactly who will be teaching in the remote learning academy at particular grade spans, but students together who could be from Seabrook, Northampton, Hampton Falls, in the same classroom, in a remote environment, probably done by grade span. But as Dr. Hobbs pointed out last night, with a daily schedule, you know, that presentation actually includes some of those sample schedules for elementary and middle level. And so a schedule, daily live sessions with their teachers, those kinds of pieces. And again, you can see some additional detail of that, but very much based on the competencies and the curriculum as we've laid them out across the SAU for all of our schools. So students would be able to transition back. Again, we're looking for a commitment of one trimester to that model. That's really the only way to make the model work, is to have those kind of commitments. And so there would be the ability to transition back. So Dr. Hobbs, am I missing any pieces? Are there, is there anything you want to add to the remote learning academy description?
No, I mean, I think you pretty much covered it. Obviously, we'd have services that were included in the remote learning academy, like IEP services, et cetera. We'd make sure that kind of all the support services would be available within that model.
Dr. Akilian, anything I missed on that?
I think you covered it. Yeah, absolutely. Everything would be offered.
Sorry about that, Ms. Witt.
Actually, before we move on, sorry, just to cut you off again, Michelle. Before we move off of that, Sharon or Becky, do you have any questions regarding the remote academy?
Yeah, so how would it, you know, if there were a situation, and you know, we don't know what's going to happen, but where everybody transferred to a remote model, how would that, the remote academy and that enrichment, how would that transition be made? Would it look, would it look different? Like, what would happen?
David, I know you've answered this question a number of times, so I'll turn it to you.
Sure. The idea would be that the remote academy remained its own ecosystem in terms of education. So if we had to, for example, some students would stay there. This is a remote academy.
Is it just me, or am I getting?
David, you're breaking up on us.
Right, I think it might be feedback. So if everybody can turn their mic off?
Great.
Or yeah, mute themselves if they're?
Am I good? My apologies for that. Sure. So the remote learning academy, as I said, it would be its own kind of ecosystem. And if we did have to jump to remote across the board, that would stay intact as an entity. I would just put the caveat in there that, you know, these would be individual academic decisions. So, you know, if a given family had a certain scenario where they wanted to, you know, jump remote into the class that was scheduled at Barnard, which, you know, had jumped to remote previously, that wouldn't happen. These walls are going to be semi-permeable, but we are trying to make sure that there are at least, at least some sort of separation between Barnard classes and the remote learning academy.
So just a comment, and this, I don't know if this is just like my, you know, other people might feel the same way, but I think with Barnard, you know, one of the things that we really love about the school is the teachers and the community and that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering, you know, if there is that situation, would the enriched, what was the terminology using, enriched learning environment or enriched remote learning?
Enrich virtual, yeah.
Enrich virtual. Would, would it be able to, if there were a lot of people that wanted to transfer over to that, would it be able to accommodate everybody? I'm just thinking that people, kids at Barnard are going to want to be with their Barnard kids and their Barnard teachers.
So you're talking about if the school goes entirely remote because we have an uptick in numbers and, is that what we're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, I think David, I think what David just said is they, they are, these walls are permeable enough that that would be possible. Yeah.
Yeah, I would think it would depend on the situation, you know, if it's like a shorter-term situation where we have to go remote, or if there was a regional aspect where, you know, we had to go back into a more of a semi-permanent remote learning environment. I think there'd be different decision points.
I would agree with that.
I mean, I think one other thing before is that, and I said this to the newspaper after the meeting last night, I think if we've all discovered anything, as a region, Southeastern's region, and as an individual SAU with five districts within it, it's how dependent on one another that we are. I think, I think there's a lot of thinking that these are very independent units that stand on their own, and if we've discovered anything in the last five months, it's that that's not true. People live in different districts. When things happen there, they influence their ability to teach, or their ability to whatever, lots of different things. And that's really been sort of an aha moment, I think, for my colleagues and my colleagues among the superintendents, and we're seeing it play out now as districts choose very different models from one another. It's having an impact.
Yeah, that's very fair. Any other questions about remote learning?
So I just have a quick question. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So how do you think that the students and the parents are going to feel about someone else teaching them without their, you know, most of their classmates possibly even being at home?
I think there are, what we saw in the surveys is that there are so many factors that go into a decision to stay home, and so many different reasons that people choose it, that many of those, many of those sets of reasons are about safety, or concern, or health, or family health, those kinds of things. And I don't know how they'll feel about the educational aspect of that, but in terms of the feedback we've gotten, there's more of a focus on these other elements, I guess is what I would say.
Okay. And then this, this doesn't, it doesn't really pertain so much, well, I guess it does. It's something that I was going to ask last night, but there was a lot of stuff going on, so I just figured we'd, I'd mention it today. So I guess, like, one of my concern, not concerns, but just things that's going on in my mind is, you know, you're proposing to have the younger children go back to school, but yet have siblings maybe that will be doing the remote learning.
No, no, no. In your district, we're proposing K to 8.
No, I know, but, right, I get that. But, so, I mean, say, we had a ninth grader that was going to go to Winnicott. So say I still had a, you know, someone has a fourth grader that's going to school, and then the ninth grader who isn't going to school, I mean, there's still that risk factor of, you know, possibly bringing the virus or the illness or something back to your own home as well, like with one student being in school and another at home. Right?
Well, sure, except that there are precautions in place at that school, and people have asked us where there were the possibilities of bringing kids into school and to maintain safety that we do.
Right, okay.
I mean, my understanding is Amesbury, I don't know where Amesbury is specifically, but my understanding is Amesbury is probably going to have a very different model than what you have K to 8. So the same thing holds there, right?
I don't, I'm not sure. I mean, Amesbury, I think they're just talking about all the schools are going to do the same thing. It sounds like it's all going to be remote. That's the last thing that I've heard. So some kids, you know, it's not like some younger kids, the model's going, and then the older kids aren't. I think it's all just basically the same. I'm just asking.
But they're different, but that's one district. And so that isn't the way, that isn't the way our decisions get made. And so we were asked to look at this in terms of each individual district, and that's what we've tried to provide.
Right, yeah, yeah. And I mean, I wasn't trying to compare it toward Amesbury at all. I was just, I was just in my mind thinking that of like siblings, and some are entering buildings and some aren't. So I was just wondering how families or parents are going to feel about that, that some kids are entering the building at a risk possibly, and then some kids aren't entering the building because they don't want to have that risk, but yet they still have a child who's in the building that could potentially be. Do you see what I'm trying to?
And those may be people who choose the remote academy.
Okay.
They have that option.
So Jim, we do have a comment that was received. I don't know if you want to read it, or?
Yeah, sure. It's from Allison O'Connell. She said, Becky, I am one such parent who is likely to choose the remote learning academy, and I feel comfortable with the cross-district model for teaching slash classmates. This is an unprecedented situation, so I don't expect a perfect situation, or too much control beyond the decision to be remote or not. My child's safety is the top priority. Appreciate that there are many other views, but I wanted to share mine because you'd asked. And, yeah, I mean, I do think, I think what you're addressing, Becky, is a very valid situation, where you can have a kid in high school who may be remote and may have a child who's still going to Barnard, who's going in person. And I think it ultimately is probably on the decision of the parent, they have the option of having all their children stay remote in that scenario if they don't want to be exposed to some, some risk, or they can, they can go remote and kind of eliminate that. So I think it's a personal decision at the parent level. Does anybody else have questions on the remote learning academy before we move on? Okay, I just want to discuss, I was on the back-to-school task force, and so I kind of saw this being kind of put together over many months, or a couple of months here. And I thought it was a very, remote learning academy is a very elegant and smart decision, I think, by the administration in order to address parent concerns who are uncomfortable having their child go into a building at this point in time.
Thanks.
Michelle, I'm sorry that we kept you hanging a little bit there, but, so, you know, one of the things that's really interesting to me is, what have you guys started to do at the building level to ensure the safety of the children?
Sure, I can do that now. So we've been sort of anticipating this, and then as things have gotten closer, we've sort of speeded up the process. So some of the structures that we have in place for the safety of our students and staff, all students and staff will be screened prior to the start of school each day. Students are going to remain in cohorts the entire day. We will not be mixing cohorts, which will be the classroom, the students in that classroom. Students' desks are going to be placed a minimum of six feet apart in each classroom, and masks will be required for students and staff at all times. Changed our recess and lunch schedule to allow for separation of cohorts. So six to eight students will be eating lunch, while the K to five students will be at recess, and then they will switch. And during recess time, we're going to separate the three, the playground area, then the two fields. So one cohort will be in each section of the outdoors during recess, so they won't be mixing cohorts at recess as well. Teachers will be given sanitizer spray or disinfectant wipes to disinfect the desks and all common areas like sinks and doorknobs and counters on a regular basis. We have placed hand sanitizer stations mounted outside of every door, every room in the school, so everybody can use sanitizer before entering. And hand sanitizer stations will be placed in every classroom and every room in the building. The PTA is helping us procure tents for outdoor classrooms, so we will have, our hope is to have several tents outside, so that, like a canopy tent for shade, so students can have outdoor classrooms. And I'm going to encourage that as much as possible while the weather is nice. We have started to make floor markings and directional signs in the school to help maintain social distancing when entering and exiting the building. The K3 students will be using the door and the Van Bocken wing to enter and exit the building, so they won't be mixing with the students, the middle school students, the K to five students. And today we're talking, we could even shut the door off, so they're totally separate from each other. The four to eight students will be using the front door to enter and exit the building as well. We have started making maximum occupancy signs to be placed on all the doors and all the rooms, so staff knows how many people are allowed in each room. The computer lab is going to become our isolation room, and that room is for students who have symptoms of COVID-19, and they will be brought to that room, and parents will be notified immediately to come and pick them up. We chose that room because it's large enough to put about four or five students in, so six feet apart if we have to. We also have a room divider that we're going to place in there just to further help separate students in that room. And we also chose that room because of the bathroom, and because there's an exit to outside, so students can go right home without entering the building again. We are, we have started, we purchased portable city's guards that will be provided for support staffs who are working one-on-one with students. We are, we have started, we purchased portable sneeze guards that will be provided for support staffs who are working one-on-one with students or in small groups. It's really important, especially for assessing students. We've purchased a sneeze guard for the administrative assistance desk because she will be there won't be very, nobody's going to be allowed in the building, but just for deliveries and things. We have placed grade A filters in the HVAC system. And the fresh air vents in the HVAC system have been open to eliminate air recirculation. We've repaired and replaced all the screens in the windows so that all the windows will be open for air circulation and flow. For bathroom procedures, the K three students have their own bathroom in their classroom, so they won't have to be sharing a bathroom outside of their cohort. The four to eight students will be using the bathroom at the end of the hallway. We're putting up occupancy signs to indicate whether the bathroom is open for use. We will be allowing only two students at a time in those bathrooms. We have hand washing station, hand washing signs are posted at all sinks. And the staff will utilize the staff bathroom. We have cleaning procedures in place where teachers will clean high touch surfaces regularly in the classroom. And the entire school will be disinfected using electrostatic sprayers as determined by the manufacturer recommendations. The isolation room will be disinfected after every use. And common areas and touch surfaces like doorknobs, sinks and light switches will be disinfected every two hours or more frequently if needed. And we have procured PPE equipment that will be available to all staff and students that includes surgical face masks, cloth face masks. We have pediatric face mask, nitro gloves, KN, KN nine five masks. We have face shields, disposable gowns, thermometers and, and ninety-five masks for the school nurse. And we have a plan in place for students who have symptoms of COVID-19. And we sort of have a scenario of what will happen if a student is suspected of having a symptom of COVID-19. And we have a whole procedure in place for that, that the school nurses have been working on. And I think I feel like Bill said, as from what the survey results showed, I really think that we will be able to do this at the school. I feel confident.
Thank you, Michelle. Sharon or Becky, do you have questions?
Can you just explain, so like cohorts, do you mean like little pods? So the kids will be in those little pods during recess and lunch, but they'll be, there'll be more kids in a, in a classroom? Is it, am I understanding that right? Or will it be a?
The cohort will pretty much be the class. So K one students will be one cohort. This is all dependent on how many, who is coming back. We don't know exactly who's coming back. But it's, for example, it would be K one would be one cohort. They would always be together. They wouldn't be mixing with any other students. And we would have very little, few people would be allowed in that cohort.
So the, the classrooms that they're in, like the K one or, you know, the bigger classrooms, they're big, you know, obviously they're big enough, right? To be able to have the six feet apart and all of that stuff. Okay.
Well, it, they are. But as Bill said, it does depend on which students are coming.
Right, right. And then, so the cohorts will basically be the, the, the grade levels, right? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Becky, did you have any questions regarding?
I don't, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing I want to say is masks are mandatory. And that, that question has come up from public. And I just, it, it is a situation where if a, a child will not be allowed to enter the cohort or school if they are unwilling to wear a mask. That's correct, right, Bill?
Yes, it is.
And I think Bill mentioned this last night. If, if that doesn't happen, then this doesn't work. Everybody has to wear a mask.
That, that and the, and, and I just want to emphasize that every meeting I'm going to be at, the idea of people keeping kids home, our employees staying home if they have any of those symptoms. If, if that doesn't happen, none of this will work. And we've started to see that across the country, right? We've seen examples of that already. Schools have started open. I, I, if I could just mention, and Caroline just texted me, thank you, that one of the, one of the physicians that we've been working with, Dr. Guedi, is, is actually here. He's, he's come, he's gracious enough to come to all of our board meetings, I think, over the next few days, I think all. And, and so he's here if, if any of the board members have, have questions or if you'd like to hear from, from him at all. He's been a tremendous support to us and aid to us as we've sort of looked at this back to school plan and, and just been available for us to bounce questions off. He's just been great. So, and, and he's, he's one of your attendees tonight.
Okay, good. Thank you. Michelle, do you also want to touch on how the curriculum is being built up and what we are doing on the technology side? I think that's going to be pretty important to know.
Yeah, so we have purchased Chromebooks, so we will be one-to-one now. With Chromebooks, they're slated to come in in mid-August, so we're fingers crossed that they will actually show up at that time. So technology is going to be a really important component of instruction in person and of course remotely. And we will be spending, especially the beginning of the school year, focusing on social emotional learning and on using technology and having students be comfortable with a platform so that if we have to go remote anytime, every, it's, it'll be simple for students because that'll be part of what they're already doing.
Anybody have any other questions regarding this or?
I have a question. How will the, how will the decision be made to transition from in school to remote? Like what are the things, what are the sort of like mark benchmarks you're looking for? You know, to be able to make that decision?
So well, as you know, last spring, it was, it was an issue of the, well, we actually went before the governor as the region went. I mean, it'll, it'll be those kind of indicators. It'll be our consultation with with the physicians that we're talking with. It'll be paying attention to what we get from DHHS. You know, I, I, I don't think we have a specific metric right now. Maybe one of our conversations to create such a, such a metric. I know we're talking about a metric to begin to transition some of the schools that are going to be more remote back in, so in the, sort of the other direction. But, but they'll, it, it, they'll be those, we'll pay attention to those same sort of factors that I think we've, we've paid attention to at the beginning of this experience and, and have been monitored over the last few months.
Sharon, how I've thought about it is the curriculum and the way that technology aspects are kind of being put into place moving forward will allow for students and teachers to flip fairly quickly. And hopefully seamlessly or as, as close as you can be to seamlessly. And then it's just going to, you know, there's a tremendous amount of unknowns on, on what's going to happen. Clearly, if you had a positive test case, you would shut down the school. And then the other question comes down to just what does it look like in the community and, and the area surrounding it? And, you know, how, how risky is, or how much is the, are infection rates increasing around? So that's a more of a judgment call and based on kind of facts and circumstances at the time.
Thank you. And thank you, Michelle. That was a lot of work to put in, thrown into the fire here. Welcome to Barnard.
I'm happy to be here. I think it's a perfect sized school for something like this, so we're in good shape.
Right. If you're going to be in the middle of a pandemic, Southampton's not a bad place to be.
My wife always says, if any school could pull this off, it's going to be Barnard. So just given the size. Did anybody else have any questions regarding the return to school plan? I'm not hearing anything. So on the board docs, sorry. So we do need to have a motion, right?
Yes.
To approve the proposed plan for return to school. So can I get a motion?
I make a motion to accept the proposed plan for return to school.
I second. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I second.
Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Purdick?
Yes.
And Jim Kind?
Yes.
The vote's been taken.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda for continuing in business is 5B, which is the Southampton, Southampton Winnebago tuition agreement.
Yes. So the good news is that I have received a draft of the agreement from Attorney Casassa. The bad news is, is in this, in the scheme of this entire week, I neglected to upload it for your review. So I will be making sure you get a copy to review. I will take that to the Winnebago Board at their meeting on the eighteenth. We will review it with you, obviously, at our next meeting. And, and we can proceed from there. But Attorney Casassa has created a draft for us to start those discussions. And one thing I should point out, that he pointed out, is he, he's happy to play this role right now between the districts, but should there become the beginnings of or some elements of a negotiation? His recommendation will be that we bring on additional counsel so that each district is represented in those conversations. We don't know whether that's where you'll all end up. We certainly hope not, but if that happens, then, then that would be, that would be a step we would take. So I'll make sure you get that tonight or tomorrow. I'm sorry I didn't get it, get it uploaded.
I think it's perfectly understandable that you have a lot on your plate and everybody does, so.
Thank you.
Yes, we would like you to get that finished up and going to move forward.
Entirely agree.
All right. Next is agenda item number six A, which is the school board audit questionnaire. Matt, are you going to be leading this?
Yes. So as you know, we do conduct an annual audit to review our financials and controls from the prior year. So we are currently in that process to look at the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. As part of that process, we, we do require, or the, the, our auditor requires that the board answer a questionnaire. So I'm going to read a number of questions and I'll ask for the board to, to answer them. So do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity?
No.
Have you received any communications from employees, former employees, regulators or others alleging fraud?
No.
Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow? And I have, we, we do have a copy of that, that code of ethics for your reference.
Yes.
Yes.
So that is yes. And if yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with the entity? And the, this, this code does prohibit it, so that'd be a yes.
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 So have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July first, twenty nineteen? Who was the school district SAU or any retirement savings pension or other similar plans was or is to be a party? The first item is the sale, purchase, exchange or leasing of property?
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services or facilities?
No.
Transfer or receipt of income or assets? Maintenance of bank balances as compensating balances for the benefit of another?
No.
Any other transactions?
No.
Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both in the matter and payroll prior to the release of funds?
Yes.
Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulations pertaining to the entity. So this is typically provided through the superintendent and the SAU office. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Does the board review comparative reports of estimated and actual, actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's done on a monthly basis? What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of this process? Also, does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports?
Yes.
Yeah, so tip it, so typically we provide both a revenue and expenditure report on a monthly basis. You know, one exception to that rule would be, for example, this month where there, there, there really hasn't been any revenue, so we can provide a report. But you will receive a revenue report next month. Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT function?
Yes.
Is there a written investment policy adopted?
Yes.
And the, the, the last, it was last approved on October twenty-second of twenty nineteen. Have you adopted the use of either debit or credit cards by employees?
Yes.
Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer? So there are two. There's a student activity fund, which for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year was Walter Houston, the principal. So next year, this current year, it'll be Michelle Witt. And then we have our expendable trusts, which are man, or that are held by the Southampton trustees of the trust funds. Has the board approved a fund balance policy in compliance with GASB fifty-four?
Yes.
Does the school district SAU have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities?
There's no, right?
Correct. So nothing. Well, I mean, that's, that's your answer, but I, I, you know, I am not aware of any Southampton crowdfunding activities. I will note that when we do this questionnaire for the SAU, this answer will be, will be yes, because we just did that GoFundMe fundraising campaign for the food service program at the SAU level. So that's an example of a, of a crowdfunding activity that has occurred. Since the World Health Organization's declaration of the worldwide pandemic due to coronavirus COVID-19, how has the board adapted to making financial decisions, reviewing budget versus actual reports and approving vendor and payroll manifests? So, so all board meetings have been held via Zoom format. Financial reports are uploaded through board docs for review. All manifests, both payroll and accounts payable are submitted via DocuSign and approved, reviewed and approved by the boards. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think that covers it.
All right, I will complete this questionnaire and submit it for signature by the chair via DocuSign. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So next on the agenda is personnel, which I believe we're going to have to go into non-public for, is that correct? So we still do have a lot of attendees on. I think this is going to be the last major agenda item. I mean, there's some, all personnel related, it looks like from here.
Dave and I spoke earlier about the best way to do the the non-public. And we've got several people on here, a little more than we expected, but the Dave, do you think it's?
Yeah, I mean, I can just set up a separate Zoom. Yeah, I mean, I can just set up a separate Zoom where we can jump over and do a non-public. And Rhonda, you can keep this meeting going.
Right. Just put it on hold.
All right, so let me, let me take care of that.
And I would say just if anybody in the public does have any questions that they missed in the public comment, that would be a good time just to write them. So when we come back from non-public, we can take one last crack at answering any questions.
You just might want to let Becky know what the new call-in number is for the non-public session, once Dave sends that to you. So anybody that's an attendee at this meeting, we're just gonna put this meeting on hold while they go and do a non-public session. And then when they come back, they will resume this to continue any business after the non-public.
While we're setting that up, what's the timeframe for making the decision on remote learning, learning academy versus physically attending? I think you're on.
We haven't done that yet. Because, as I said last night, it's the, what we can do with the Remote Learning Academy is really dependent upon these decisions. So I think that will be a conversation after we finish three meetings tomorrow morning. We, Dr. Hobbs has done a great job talking about how we sort of manage that administration of the academy looks like and how we begin to figure out who our teachers might be in the academy. So a lot of work to be done in the next few days, but the turnaround. My guess is we'll get something out next week to people.
Okay, thank you.
Don't tell Dr. Hobbs I just committed into that.
It's a loose next week, guys. That's what he gets for, you know, leaving the meeting.
And once he gets the non-public meeting set up, what he's gonna do is he's gonna send you an invite. So you'll get that through your email. And you guys will leave this meeting. You'll join his non-public meeting. And then when you're, as soon as you're done deliberating, you'll leave that and then you're gonna rejoin this meeting. Okay. So, because this meeting will still be open and available, and I believe you should have the invite from Dave right now.
Yeah, so I'm gonna leave this meeting and then go over to the other one.
Right. And I will keep this meeting open. I'm gonna turn my screen off, so no one will see me. I don't think they want to sit there and just look, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do that as well, I think.
Yeah, once you, you have to leave this one to join the other one.
I have to leave it?
Yeah. Well, you can try, but I think it's gonna make you leave.
Okay, I'm gonna leave then.
Look, his lips didn't even move. Michelle, I'm gonna guess that you probably have that invite also. And Becky, you might need, you should have received an email.
I did. I did. So I'm still on this one, but I'm home now, so. I can join on the laptop at the same time. So I see Caroline and I see David.
Okay.
So I'll just unmute.
You on this one, and that way you'll still, it'll hold your spot over here.
Use a breakout session?
Yeah, you're gonna unmute me on this one?
Yes, I'm gonna mute you. They should all be returning. Becky, I just unmuted you on the phone.
Gotcha.
And Michelle is back. Bill is back.
I lost you again.
Oh, we hear you, Becky.
Okay.
And just looking for Sharon. So while we're waiting for Sharon, I'm just curious. Some of you just popped right back in here on your own, and I didn't need to bring you in. And some of you I had to bring you in. I just wonder what was different. What's that, Bill?
Says I'm muted.
I unmuted you.
Oh, I just, yeah, I just came in.
Did you ever exit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't be on two meetings at the same time. And you can't do breakouts. No. That's why I had to leave. And you can't do breakouts in a webinar, so that might be the best way to do it for non-public.
All right. Looks like we're, we're all back, right? So can I get a motion to resume the public meeting?
Make a motion to resume the public meeting.
Second. Second it.
And Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Verdic?
Yeah.
And Jim Kind?
Yes.
Vote recorded.
Great, thank you. So next on the agenda item is, can I get a motion to ratify the superintendent's nomination and hiring of Martha Johnson for the one-half FTE school counselor position for the 2020, 21 school year?
I made that motion to ratify. Do I need to say it again, Rhonda?
No, you don't need to.
No, that works.
Okay.
I second it.
The vote.
Hey, Sharon Gordon?
Yes.
Rebecca Verdic?
Yeah.
And Jim Kind?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of our agenda items, and it doesn't appear that there are any additional public questions or anything in chat, correct?
Yeah, I don't see any, and I haven't seen anybody raise their hand.
Okay, great. So I guess just before we close, I just want to thank everybody for their hard work and, and the work that you're gonna be doing over the next year. It's gonna be certainly different experience than it's been in the past, but I just want to thank you in advance. I know you guys are all working hard to look out for each other and for our children. So just thank you. And officially, Michelle, we're very excited to have you.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Great. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Did you hear me? Second?
Yep.
Thank you. And is that just a roll call, or is everybody unanimous on that?
Unanimous.
All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.